Good evening, everyone. I'm Commissioner Dornell Grisby with the Transportation Commission. Please be here in Vallejo to convene this hearing to receive public comment on application our commission received to authorize tolling on State Route 37. First, I'd like to go over the language accommodations during this meeting for those participating via Zoom. A show me slide. I'll provide this information in English, but I'll ask our Spanish and the Galoche interpreters to repeat it. We'll need everyone on Zoom to select the language, even those participating in English. Instructions are as follows. First, click on the interpretation button in your Zoom screen. This button is typically at the bottom of your screen, the location will depend on the device you're using. Reminder for those that will participate in the meeting in English, please make sure you select English as well as that you can hear anything that interpreters interpret from Spanish and the Galoche. Two, select your language. I'll ask the Spanish interpreter to repeat these instructions now.
¿Cómo están? Buenas tardes. ¿Les habla o intérprete en español? Ahora, para las personas interesadas en accesar el canal de interpretación en español, por favor, vaya a la parte baja de su pantalla, en su computadora o móvil, y encuentre la barra de herramientas que se ve de esta forma que la puede ver en pantalla. Aquí puede encontrar el globo terráqueo, el mundo. Haga clic en este canal y escoja su canal. En nuestro caso sería en español. Se le pide también que, por favor, mantenga su micrófono apagado hasta que el coordinador o la coordinadora le diga que es su turno de hablar.
I'll now ask the Galoche interpreter to repeat the instructions.
Para, para que se salen, para que se escuche la sal, haga clic en el botón en el fondo de la pantalla, puedes elegir allí. Recuerde, haga clic en la lengua de traducción, y eso es el galoche. Entonces, elija la lengua y presiona el botón.
Give us a moment to enable the audio interpretation features so that you can access it. Give us a moment to start recording in these languages. You may hear a short break in the audio as we activate recording. Finally, note that if you are calling via phone, the interpretation feature is not available in Zoom for phone-only participants. Please log into Zoom to access the interpretation if you can. Live closed captioning also is available for Zoom participants. Please select the Show Captions tab at the bottom of your screen. There are a number of language options available there to choose from. That concludes the language combination and closed captioning instructions. All right, welcome again to everyone. I'd like to start by thanking all of you for attending today, those both here in person and those via Zoom. Your attendance and participation today is very helpful and important to us. I understand we have Vallejo Mayor Robert McConnell in attendance. I'd like to acknowledge and thank him for being here. Since some of you are attending today, may I be familiar with our commission? I wanted to provide some brief background for you. We are a state agency of eleven commissioners, nine of whom are appointed by the governor and two by the legislature. In addition to myself, we also have four commissioners. We have four commissioners, Jay Rashard here, along with more commissioners participating virtually, Commissioners Norton, Lou, and Martinez. And we have our interim executive director, Denise Taylor, also is with us today, as were its chair, Leah Eager. The main responsibility of our commission is to allocate state and federal spending to transportation projects throughout the state of California. We also have a few other responsibilities, one of which is to approve applications for local agencies for town trams to toll on state highways. And that brings us to the purpose of today's hearing, which is an informal, informational hearing to receive public comment on an application our commission has received to toll State Route 37. Your input of this application is vitally important to us as the commission considers this tolling application. We will provide instructions on how to comment once we get to the comment period in the Gen Item Number Four. Now we'll move to Gen Item Number Two, which will be an overview of the commission's toll facility approval process for our interim executive director, Denise Taylor.
Thank you, Commissioner Grisby, and thank you all. Thank you to all today for attending this hearing. Before we hear about the proposed project and receive public comment, we want to first make everyone aware of the process for approving toll facilities. In 2015, the legislature passed a law, Assembly Bill 194, which assigned the commission the responsibility to approve toll facilities in California. This law contains several minimum criteria for the commission to consider for a toll facility application. For example, the product must demonstrate that it will improve corridor performance, such as by increasing the number of people able to pass through the corridor or by reducing travel delays. In addition, the commission approved program guidelines in March 2016 that request applicants to provide supplemental information, such as the project's impact on nearby transportation routes and impacts on air quality. A complete list of the application requirements in the law and the commission's guidelines are available on the commission's website or by contacting the commission director. The law also requires the commission, prior to approving an application, conduct at least one public hearing at or near the proposed toll facility for the purpose of receiving public comments. Today's hearing is being held pursuant to this provision of the law. On March 27, the commission received an application from the Bay Area Infrastructure Financing Authority to authorize tolling on a portion of State Route 37, or just west of State Route 121, to the Mare Island interchange. The hearing we are holding today on this application is informational only to listen and receive public comment. I want to emphasize this. There will be no actions taken today by the commission. We are here to listen and learn about the application and to hear from the public. Commission staff currently are reviewing the application and will be taking into consideration all of the public comment that we receive from today's hearing, as well as any additional written comments we receive after today's hearing and before. Commission staff will then make recommendations of the commission whether to approve the application at the next commission meeting, which will be held on May 17 and 18 in San Francisco. Again, that's May 17 and 18 in San Francisco. In closing, I would like to reiterate that today's hearing is informational only for the purpose of receiving public comment. And again, thank you all for joining us today.
Thank you, Denise. Next up, we will hear from Andrew Frimer, Executive Director of Bay Area Infrastructure Financing Authority.
Thank you, Chair. There's the Andrew Frimer, Deputy Executive Director of the National Transportation Commission and Bay Area Infrastructure Financing Authority. I think we have an opening document video that's really designed to put context on
Highway 37 is a critical piece of the Bay Area mobility puzzle. The 21-mile corridor connects Solano County cities and some of the most affordable housing in the Bay Area with jobs in Marin and Sonoma Counties. Yet, the road is challenged by the issues of congestion, flooding. Sears Point to Mare Island routinely adding 30 minutes to morning commute times and 80 minutes to the evening commute. Sometimes, it's even worse. Storms and king tides have shut down the Marin County side of the highway for days at a time. There is no easy alternative to Highway 37. Drivers forced to detour north or south would have to travel twice as far to get from Vallejo to Nevada or vice versa. A commitment to equity requires a reliable link between the comparatively affordable housing in cities like Vallejo, Fairfield, and American Canyon and the job markets to the west. And congestion relief is necessary to make Highway 37 a viable route for new bus service. That's why these state and regional agencies formed a partnership to develop and build both near-term and long-term solutions for Highway 37. Working with transportation authorities in Solano, Napa, Sonoma, and Marin Counties, the partners have several key goals. Resilience, near-term and long-term adaptation to reduce risk from flooding and sea level rise, plus early enhancements for sensitive baylands. Equity, reduce delays caused by congestion. And add bus transit. Forty percent of all Highway 37 trips are taken by folks who live in lower-income households. Access, increase bike, pedestrian, and recreational access across the North Bay. Restoration, integrate restoration of the historic North Bay banelands in the redesign of Highway 37. Rising sea levels will require a permanent, long-term solution that's higher, wider, safer, greener, and built to last. Caltrans this winter identified an elevated four-lane causeway along the existing Highway 37 alignment with a bicycle and pedestrian path and accommodations for an eventual extension of smart rail service as the preferred solution for improving mobility, adapting to rising waters, and restoring the health of the San Pablo Baylands. It is expected to take at least 10 to 20 years and billions of dollars that are not yet available to make this vision a reality. The team proposes to reduce congestion in the bottleneck between Sears Point and Mare Island by using the existing shoulders to add another lane in each direction. Challenges include minimizing impacts on sensitive wetlands and the use of any bay fill. But this 10-mile improvement project could open to traffic in five years or less, accelerating Highway 37's permanent transformation, allowing faster and more reliable travel throughout the Highway 37 corridor. Carpool lanes to prioritize high-occupancy vehicles during peak commute times. The introduction of bus service between Vallejo and both Nevada and San Rafael. Improved public access to the Bay Trail, the Vine Trail, and Vallejo waterfront sites. A critical head start on improving hydraulic flows and restoring key marshland habitats. Specific improvements include replacing the Tulay Creek Bridge near Sears Point with a much longer bridge that will promote baylands restoration by allowing more water to flow into and out of the creek channel. Plus, enhancements to stop deterioration of what's known as strip marsh east near Mare Island, which provides habitat for the endangered salt marsh harvest mouse and other species. The other big issue, of course, is money for both the near-term Sears Point to Mare Island improvements and the series of long-term resilience projects to completely transform the entire Highway 37 corridor. Tolls are a practical solution that cannot only help speed project completion, but also serve as a match to secure other regional, state, and federal dollars. By encouraging carpooling and transit use, tolling can also help manage traffic congestion and reduce overall vehicle miles traveled. In 2023, the Bay Area Infrastructure Financing Authority, an MTC affiliate, applied to the California Transportation Commission for authorization to operate a toll facility on the critical stretch of Highway 37 between Sears Point and Mare Island. The proposal includes toll-free carpool lanes and told general-purpose lanes with tolls collected electronically. Toll collection would not begin until these new lanes open for traffic. And transit alternatives and a low-income toll discount program similar to other MTC-sponsored equity initiatives are in place. What do you think about the proposed near-term project and the use of tolls to improve mobility and begin environmental restoration as soon as possible? We look forward to hearing from you as we discuss the past, the present, and especially the future of Highway 37.
Thank you. We're running into a powerful chat, but I'll introduce. So I think I want to start out by really emphasizing the fact that this is a partnership. This is a partnership of State of California and Caltrans, Metropolitan Commission, as well as the four counties that are touching State Route 37. In addition, the video made reference to the representation and partnership. We're all developing resource agencies, a lot of the environmental groups that are investing in the restoration of victims, which really is on their side. So a little bit about the Bay Area Infrastructure Financing Authority. That is a joint powers authority made up of Metropolitan Transportation Commission and Bay Area Toll Authority. It's managed by the same commissioners and will receive work of both of those agencies. And it's well-versed in the work associated with tolling. So the Bay Area Infrastructure Financing Authority operates the Bay Area Express lanes through Bay Area Toll Authority Fast Track and Service Center.
Can I ask you to speak just a little bit louder into the microphone?
Sure.
Thank you.
So the Bay Area Infrastructure Financing Authority is a joint powers authority made up of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and the Bay Area Toll Authority, administered by the exact same commission staff as the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. It currently operates through the Bay Area Toll Authority's Fast Track system, all of the express lanes that are operated under MTC's purview. It's also used to finance other investments in the region and is an organization that has been in place for many years now. Next slide. So the question here is why tolling? First of all, tolling does help finance the infrastructure investments that we're making today. It will be used as a local match to match with state and federal grants that we need to complete this particular important project, and it will also provide revenue to keep it open and operating during its term. It also will help us deliver on a lot of the ecological enhancements that we're required to do and want to do in this corridor. The important point to mention, as was mentioned in the presentation of the video, is that tolling would not begin until the improvements, adding capacity, and transit investments are ready to roll. It will also have a low-income component, as was mentioned, similar to the work that we've done on transit with Clipper Start and are currently just beginning on our express lanes in the A Corridor through Oakland and the San Clara areas. Toll rates will be consistent with the other toll bridges in the region and will be collected electronically. Next slide. It's important also just to remember that the primary investment is really around equity. And most of the folks that commute on this roadway are living in the Vallejo and Solano County area and working in the West Bay. They can't generally afford the housing that's there until the housing balance is resolved. We really need to take and pay close attention to that improvement. It's also a very important corridor for evacuations and emergencies in trying to keep the Richmond Cell, San Rafael border open during events like that are clearly important. What we see happening with these first improvements is that we'll reduce the travel time to eastbound from what can be 100 minutes to 26 minutes. We also think in westbound, you'll improve the traffic delays from about 60 minutes to 30 minutes. We also think the investments pay off in terms of the economic benefits. So that we do see by saving those traveler delays, we'll have considerable improvements in the economy. We also want to mention that about half of the cost of the investment goes to improvements that are required regardless of whether or not we do it widely. So this project needs significant improvements to keep it open and operational to sentiment due to the fact that it subsides in certain areas. And we will also be making the improvements to several bridge structures that impede the way the water flows. And then, as I mentioned, we'll be adding public access to some of the existing Bay Trail work that we're going to complete, as well as the highway improvements. So to sum it up, we just think this is a critical corridor for many reasons, and we're really excited about the opportunity to get this project moving. With that, I'd like to turn the mic over to Dina Atuance, the executive, the Caltrans director in District Four.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to talk in the next few slides about why State Route 37 is a very important thing. So I want to start with this slide here that shows the layout of the realty of State Route 37. It's one of the most critical links between East and West. It serves between US 101 and Interstate 80. And when we talk about State Route 37, we usually said that it's three segments. We described the western segment, which is between US 101 and State Route 121, and Segment A. And then the middle segment between 121 and Mare Island, Segment B. And then the third segment to the east, which is between Mare Island and US, excuse me, Interstate 80, Segment C. This is a very critical route, as mentioned by Mr. Frimer, that, you know, it provides that link between the housing markets in Solano and the job market in the smaller counties. It's also an important route in the sense that it doesn't have a whole lot of alternatives in terms of the detours. If you look at the map on the very top of the presentation there on this slide, you see that the two alternatives to the north, you get a little highway 116 and Highway 12, and then to the south, that will be through Interstate 580, which is significantly longer. We're talking about almost doubling the length of the segment in State Route 37. Also, you know, if you look at Segment A, which is between US 101 and 121, then this is a four-lane highway, giving us two lanes in each direction. Segment B between 121 and Mare Island is a two-lane highway, which is only in each direction. And then Segment C between Mare Island and Interstate 80 is also four lanes. So you can clearly see that there's a lot of choke point in that nine-and-a-half mile segment in Segment B as well. State Route 37 has many challenges. We talked a little bit about the congestion challenge and the fact that we have delayed combined peak hours of about north of 100 minutes delay. It's something that a lot of motorists suffer through every day commuting with this traffic. But it also has a couple of other big challenges that we have to battle with. One is the flooding, which has been reoccurring back in 2012. We had to shut down the highway for 28 days because of flooding. And we had to repeat that again in 2012. And most recently, this year, earlier this year. The flooding has been a reoccurring issue that we needed to deal with, and we've spent a lot of money to try to do some kind of fixing, but we definitely have to look at the long term and what we need to do there. In addition to flooding, there's also the sea level rise issue. This route is expected to be on the water by 2015. And we need to figure out solutions on how we are going to address that sea level rise and how we're going to be able to pick up this slope to an adequate elevation for the impacts of the sea level. Next slide, please. But also, you know, another thing that we need to look at is, what are we going to do in the long term in order for us to be able to achieve that? And the ultimate resiliency project, also known as the old corridor sea level rise adoption, is what's described here in terms of the benefits that would be produced out of that. This project is going to be extending from US 101 all the way to Interstate 80. And it will provide many benefits, including addressing sea level rise, ecological restoration and conservation. A multi-hundred car corridor, so definitely without like industrial components to it, and also access to Big Ed's and equity. Next slide, please. So what do we do in the meanwhile? There's a couple of very important projects that are ongoing. Today, we're here to talk about one of them, which is improvements from Sears Point to Mare Island, which addresses a number of benefits and provides those short-term advances, which benefits in the meanwhile, while you're still working on the Interstate 37 ultimate project. In addition to the project we're here to discuss today, there's also the sea level flood reduction project, excuse me. The flood reduction project is looking a proponent with the intro to address the flooding that's reoccurring all the time in Segment D, on State Route 37. So while we're working on these two projects in the intro, we're also working on the Interstate 37 ultimate project. And recently, Caltrans, in December of last year, has completed a health study, which stands for planning and environmental linkage. And what it does, it identifies how we're going to address sea level rise on the entire State Route 37. And it has basically put together an implementation plan, a commending of these six strategies, which divides the ultimate project into a number of smaller projects so that we can depend on each one of them. I would like next to introduce Jeanette Wiseman, who will be talking about more details of the project.
Thank you, Director. Jeanette Wiseman, MTC, State Route 37 Program Editor. So I'm going to talk to you more about the project itself and proposed tolling. So the HOV lanes and their Google of the lane draw in this innovative fashion is really the heart of this project. The schematic you see at the center of this slide showcases how we plan on delivering that with an HOV lane in each direction alongside general-purpose lanes. We also are including the bus transit. That was earlier discussed to provide alternatives to your vehicles getting across the corridor, which currently none exists. We also will be providing enhancements to recreation in the corridor and then making really important safety improvements to address collisions, reducing the chance of secondary collisions through intelligent transportation systems, ITS, such as changeable message signs that will alert you if there's severe delays and if it's a crash ahead. We also have resilience as a cornerstone of even this interim near-term project, and that will be the form of ecological restoration and early enhancements. And I'll talk more about that in a moment. And tolling is really this critical step to making all of this happen, to fund the project, and to do so in a way that is, you know, conforming with our state's sustainability policy and requirements by managing traffic demand and reducing vehicle miles traveled, So this slide shows who's using the corridor, where they're going, and what are we talking about when we're talking about the toll entry? So the background maps are from NBTA's 2018 study. The green indicates where travelers are starting, and the orange is their destination, with the darker colors indicating a greater concentration of travelers. You can see here that there are, as we've already discussed, and you probably already know, you know, substantial travel. The travelers are beginning in the east in the Vallejo Airfield, American Canyon area, and heading to the west to places like San Rafael, Nevada, and Petaluma. And the slide to the right is just showing that eastbound reverse movement. So the toll entries will be electronic toll collecting systems. We have one to two that are being considered. The picture to the left shows the location that's considered by Mare Island, just west of Mare Island. And the other image identifies the other location potentially by State Route 121. We are considering potentially having bidirectional tolling, in which case it would be told at 50% in each direction. Next slide. So this slide shows our project timeline. The steps in gray are the phases that we've already completed. So we just recently completed our Sequin VBA analysis wrapped up in February. We are now beginning the final design implementing step of the project and are working towards beginning construction in 2025 with the goal of opening the project and the improvements to the public in 2027. Next slide. This is our funding plan. So we have So we have approximately 80 million funds already in hand. That consists largely of regional and state funds. We're looking for tolling financing from tolls to make up another approximately 100 million to help pay for the project and leverage future grant funding that we are pursuing. Next slide. So now I want to emphasize the project benefits and why we think this is so important to carry forward. Next slide. The project is grounded and based around equity. So we have heard long and hard about the problems that are facing commuters who are going in large part to job opportunities to the west from areas of more affordable homeownership in eastern portion of the corridor, Solano County, and recognizing the third experience and the very congestion they're experiencing, getting stuck in traffic as part of those communities. So this project is really oriented around those disadvantaged communities, the deprived communities, and trying to improve quality of life of the State Route 37 travelers. Next slide. So how are we going to do that? We are delivering more equitable transportation, first and foremost, through the reduced travel times, reliable travel along the corridor through this congestion lane that the additional lane will provide. We'll also be offering a bus transit where none currently exists. And that will provide an alternative route to using your own vehicle. We'll also be providing discounts for those low qualifying, low income users that need to use the general purpose lane. And just as a reminder, the HOB lane will be free. We'll also be improving recreational access to areas along this portion of State Route 37. Next slide. So a little bit more about the equity program. As mentioned earlier, we're looking to have consistency across the Bay Area and utilizing existing discount programs such as IAD's START program, where there is a 50% discount to qualifying low-income individuals. Having qualifying, it'll be similar to prefer. If you have to qualify for CalFresh, Medi-Cal, you will qualify for this. We will also be working to engage with the community, the North Bay community-based organizations and the general users of State Route 37 through traditional and social media and the languages that work for you. And next slide. I just want to emphasize what that means in terms of travel time savings. Andy already spoke to this, but we really recognize and we've heard from people time and time again that their time is valuable, that time matters. And we see this as a way of bringing back time for you to do the things that matter to you and not be stuck in traffic on State Route 37. So we can reduce the afternoon commute by over 50% and the morning commute by approximately 50%. And we think this means at least 85 million in that first year of travel benefits. We also recognize by we that we can improve the travel savings while still addressing our state's sustainability and being climate responsible by reducing the MT. Next slide. So here's a little bit more detail about the transit that we are proposing along the corridor. So STA, Solano Transportation Authority, and Soul Trans are taking a lead on this development. And so this is the draft implementation plan and draft information. But the image shows that we're looking to start the bus transit at Vallejo, connecting the community of Vallejo west to Nevada, San Rafael. And that we will be connecting it to mobility hubs where you can connect to other transit, recognizing the importance of park and ride lots where you can also access it and then hop on transit. And then making sure that you have viable first and last mile options with affordable access to your final destination. Lastly, we're working with Commute 37, a rideshare platform, which helps put potential parkourers together to get them into this HOB lane, getting them through for free faster. Next slide. So here's an example of potential operations. So this is showcasing weekday operations, looking at potentially bus transit starting at 5:00, going until 9:00 PM with peak travel or transit operations every 30 minutes and off-peak every hour. Next slide. We also want to talk a little bit more detail about the recreational access that we've heard from the community is meaningful to you. The Sears Point Trail Connector is a strategic trail improvement, which would connect up to eight miles of bike and pedestrian trails and would get more ridership and pedestrians to use this beautiful portion of along State Route 37. Next slide. And then we've also heard from the city of Vallejo and the broader STA community about other projects, recreational enhancements that matter to you. There was a study in 2020, 2019 to 2021, excuse me, that identified the priority recreational improvements. And shown here on this map includes Water Canal Village Observatory, and also recognize the importance of Mare Island Education Center to reach the students in Vallejo and give them improved access to recreation and Bay information. Next slide. Then to resilience, because even though this is a near-term project, there is an opportunity to bring in face adaptation even now. And so we're looking to do that as part of a nature-based solution, which you see at Strip Marsh East. This is an important marsh habitat just south of Highway 37, near Coleman Ranch, just west of Mare Island. So this is a marsh habitat that's quickly degrading. Now it's imported to an array of special status species. And then it also provides a buffer to State Route 37 for storm surge and high tides. So it's a win-win by improving that, we also protect 37. And then another really important resilience project that will also provide ecological and transportation benefits is addressing another roadblock. It's an ecological roadblock that is a result of having the very narrow channel, Tole Creek by the Tole Creek Bridge. Currently, that opening is only about 40 feet for Tole Creek and limited, constrained by the bridge, which is only 60 feet. By replacing that bridge, we can open up that channel and we can remove this roadblock to ecological restoration that is critical to moving forward this Sonoma Creek Basin strategy project, which are otherwise waiting on our long-term resiliency work. So that is the resilience. Next slide. I just want to wrap up the benefits by pointing out we've been coming to the community, to the public over the course of many years now, starting back to 2015. As part of our Public Policy Committee meetings, we've been meeting with the elected officials of the North Bay Counties, reaching out as part of our collaboration of transportation agencies. We had focused conversations that included open houses and surveys, a discussion of topics, including tolling, hearing the public's feedback, integrating that input into our project development. And then more recently, in the last several years, we've conducted our Sequoia NIPA process and met with the public as part of scoping and draft environment document conversations. So we've heard you, we look forward to talking more with you, and we've attempted to integrate the input you've given us to date. Next slide. Almost done. I just want to call out a couple of the ways in which this project is in fact consistent with AB 194. So next slide. So this project will improve the corridor's performance. As you've heard us say several times, it will reduce delays. We are going to be, we have a fiscally constrained and reasonable toll revenue plan. And we are working cooperatively amongst our agencies. In 2015, we developed our project initiation document. Now we move on to the planner specification and estimate phase of the Caltrans delivering process wherein we'll be developing our concept of operations. Next slide. And as Andy introduced, the Bay Area Infrastructure Financing Authority is the toll applicant. NIPA will be the toll authority approving toll rates and delivering and operating and maintaining the toll system. NIPA has experience with express lanes in Alameda, Contra Costa, Solano, financing regional transportation. Next slide. Lastly, in addition to these times when we reach out to you, we'll always be available to you to reach out to us and to visit and find out more about our project and our program. The Resilient 37 Caltrans program site shown here has information that we update regularly. We also continue to hold policy and NIPA committee meetings that are open to the public. So with that.
Thank you all for the centers. I'd like to now get up to the hearing to pull the comments. The instructions for how to comment are on the slide that you see. For those attending in person, if you would like to comment, please fill out a comment card located at the back of the room with your name. Once your name is called, please come to the microphone to make your comment. For those of you attending virtually or in Zoom, please use your raise hand icon to indicate that you wish to comment. Or if you are down there and by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. We'll call you by name or the last two digits of your phone number. When it's your turn to provide a comment, press star six to unmute what's called. We'll be limiting comments to one minute. We hope to receive comments from all of the attendees today. However, I do want to note that the library closed at 8:00 p.m. We also continue to accept public comment after today. If you can email comments to us at the email address on the screen, which is ctc@catc.ca.gov. You can also find our email address and our physical mailing address on our website, ctc.ca.gov. Please be advised that improper comments and disloyal conduct are not permitted in this here. We will start the public comment with our in-person attendees. And the first name is Joseph Mickelson, which should be followed by Dave Belliff.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joe Mickelson. I'm an engineer, one of the people that created the City of American Canyon. You know a lot about the business that you're doing. And you, everybody on this board, has not told me anything I want to hear. They have no facts. You ought to be ashamed of yourself for this condition is today. It's terrible. You're talking about six lanes, four lanes. You don't know whether to use belt footings, what type of road you're going to build. You don't know nothing. You haven't told me as an engineer what you're going to do. And I take this as a personal insult. And I'm going to go talk on the floor with state legislature and talk to our governor and all the people in the state legislature on the floor under permission from the charter firm to talk. I've done a lot of bills, canceled a lot of bills, and yeah, well, I don't like this one-minute stuff, Mr.
Yeah, it's not good. Dave Belliff, followed by Ed Kelly.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Dave Belliff, I'm a local resident, and I'm representing myself. Myself won't be no other board commissioner. I like a lot about, a lot of what we're seeing here. What I don't like is the idea of a toll period. I think we really need to find another way. You won't find other toll roads, per se, other than the carpool lanes and bridges. But I'd rather not see a toll road at all. And then, of course, I'd like to see the interim project not happen unless we have 100% guarantee that any work done on that will not be done when we come to the final project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Ed Kelly. Ed Kelly, followed by Suzanne Glazer.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ed Kelly. I'm a local resident. I'm a local resident. Oh, okay, sorry about that. I work at Sonoma Raceway. And that's 37 really impacts participation out there. There's 100,000 people who are out there. And sometimes I can't get out there because 100,000 37 is just not available. So we need to maybe pick up pace on this more hard and get it sooner. That's what I said. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Susan Glover, followed by Dana Strahan.
Hello, my name is Susan Glover. I am my life partner purchased a property five miles west of Mare Island, right in what you call the strip marsh area. That is a over 140-year-old homestead that's established as part of Homestead Act. The East used to go to Bay, the original Highway 37 going through cut off the access to Bay. We purchased in 2003. And we are young, we are creative. My partner is a master woodworker. We purchased the property when he moved his shop from Sonoma to Mare Island. I work in the wine industry in Napa. Both of us do the turnaround at Skaggs Island every day. And I would like to know, first of all, how, what is your dispensation for private landowners that live on Highway 37? I also very much, I have been coming to these meetings since they began, and I have asked to be included in the process and to have our rights respected. And it has been very difficult. There is absolutely nothing in your plan to preserve our rights and our access.
Thank you. Next up is Dana Strahan.
Hi, my name is Dana Strahan. I'm a resident of Vallejo. And I just wanted to thank you for all the work on this project. I'm a little concerned about what the impact adding another toll road would have on Vallejo residents. Vallejo, as of now, many residents commute out of Vallejo to higher-paying jobs and positions in Napa, Sonoma, and the Cubs. If we follow the toll model of $7 per crossing, it would add an annual cost of $1785 per driver. This is roughly one month's rent, a significant burden to families in Vallejo. My other concern, and I have to take this into account, is that a larger road needs more noise. Has there been a study on how this noise will impact wildlife of residents who live near the bridge? And my last point is, have we considered moving the toll closer to Sears Point so that we can capture more of the revenue to really bring this project to fruition and maybe the best we can? I'm hoping that everybody on the commission takes these points into consideration. I'm hoping that everybody on the commission takes these points into consideration. And I'll take some. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Paula Connolly, followed by Joe Bellar.
Hello, I used to commute to 127 four years ago in an investment and legislators have kicked this can down the road for decades, telling us now this huge expense that is put on taxpayers' backs. The magic tolling plan is completely out of touch. You point out lower income commuters coming from Sonoma County, so the toll wasn't a factor for that, I suppose. I don't see a commuter discount only for very low income, which wouldn't help someone like me who makes enough but not quite that much. And why is there no toll in the Sonoma County area that has way more income than Sonoma? That is absolutely ridiculous. Again, so first, my husband and I, we spent almost $4,000 a year crossing the Nisha Bridge to work every day, just to go to work. It will not ease traffic. I'm on 680. It takes me longer to get to work because of the express lanes, because I'll get kind of people going 65 and you can't get around them. The peak express tolls for 10 miles from Dublin to Alamo is 925. Is that what we're looking at down the road on Highway 37 just to get across? This will be kind. Okay, well, it will create empty hardship on the people who commute. High gas prices, the gas tax, car registration. It's the responsibility of the government, federal, local, state, to provide for our roads, not putting on the backs of the commuters who are already paying a lot to keep our roads. Thank you.
Followed by Thomas Barker.
First, that has no low income effort currently on any bridge under their purview. So I don't believe them about any other low income process that they're going to come up with. This toll will unduly impact the lowest income Solano residents while leaving alternate routes to Sacramento and various resorts from the western counties untold. We're going to have a huge traffic jam on 121 now every day. It's just, this plan is so bad. This lady here has trotted out a Mare Island plan that has been thrown out for 40 years, for 40 years. I mean, I just can't believe how you guys resurrect this crap. And so anyway, finally I have to say, you tax the poor and working people with no financial impacts on either wealthy employers or the communities that have refused to build adequate affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Thomas Barker. Equity twice in the video, four times on boards, twice in Commissioner Wyson's presentation, equity. Improvements were widening Highway 37 on the Marin and Sonoma side. They were done without any tolls, not a penny. No one asked Marin and Sonoma to pay tolls for their improvements on their side of the roads, never. Creating Marin and Sonoma portion, that's going to be funded through the Solano tolls. Tolls are only on the Solano side. But we're paying for the Marin work. Only the Solano side has told, the poor side. Forty percent of the low income commuters per year video, 28% are of color per year video. Low income, we're paying. The wetlands restoration, oh hell no, you take that from other budgets. That's not coming from my tolls.
Thank you very much.
Above all, this is the opposite effect of. Lays an overwhelming majority on the poor side, on the fly side, opposite effect.
James Bernard is our next caller.
Brief history of how these guys hold. Four state bridges run east and west. We shall measure three races to tolls at eight bucks to subsidize a train that goes north-south from San Rafael to Santa Rosa. Mark extensions to San Jose, Mark Cars. They keep screwing the people that go east and west to subsidize north and south. Now, how many people in this room know that they've lost $105 million? Your toll money, you guys aware of that? $105 million gambling on tributes. There's another $180 million uncollected tolls and fines. What are these guys doing to collect it? What are they doing? I'm going to try and get you guys to pay more money again. These guys are a joke at the toll authority. They are completely ineffectual. All they want to do is keep screwing the working man. Tolls are going up in 2025 at eight bucks. You're going to have to earn 25 bucks a day to cross both bridges if you got to go to San Rafael. You're paying back now for tax dollars. Sure, Mike.
Good evening. I just want to say, first of all, my name is Ann Carr. I'm a resident of Vallejo, California. Born and raised here, have lived in the South Bay as well. One minute is completely inadequate for getting community engagement, which I thought I saw in the slides as the important part of what you guys call quote equity. This project, we obviously need better roads going from the Solano County to Marin and Sonoma. However, what we get out of this for most travelers and commuters is one lane that's going to be more expensive. Secondly, if you impose a toll on this road, you basically lock, land block Vallejo because to get out of Vallejo, we will then have three of the four major ways out of town have to be toll roads. So it's an undue burden in terms of Vallejo relative to really the entire Bay Area. So this project really needs to be reworked with respect to the toll. With respect to the engineering, it does not make sense to build a road that could be underwater. If you're going to invest in something, do an elevated road because an underwater road is going to be flooded. And like I say, one minute is completely inadequate.
And we put up, we put up so much disrespect for the public in the city of Vallejo. We have horrible tolls. We have absentee landlords. We cater to them rather than to the residents of this city of Vallejo. And we penalize the people of Vallejo with a toll in any partly, partly all directions. This isn't a prison. This is a community. And meanwhile, there's flooding on 101 during this last winter. Are we planning on taxing or tolling 101 portions because of flooding? No, I don't think so. And there's going to be a lot of other things that are going to be underwater. And you need to start respecting people. And a minute to let people speak is ridiculous. And in terms of outreach, you need to do a better outreach. I participated in these dynamics. My minute is up. I'm not breathing. Not quite yet. No, no.
Steve Burlow, brother's text.
You can listen to these people. You guys can. He said all things service, we're listening to people, they're a bunch of crap. Starting pages.
Followed by Michael Hayes.
Thank you. Steve Burlow, the Transportation and Land Use Division. We agree that tolls ought to be for users up and down the entire route rather than simply focused on the sake of the layout. Zero point. We think also that a significant portion of the toll market is going to be getting other tracks. Similar to the way tolls on tolling a bridge. Lastly, I think the funding, the focus really needs to be on the fact that what I need to reduce, I think, is like about 25% over the next 25 years. And so you really ought to have a focus or a flow link on consisting and getting a shift from the use of single occupancy vehicles to carpoolers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Followed by Bob Hickel.
Yes, thank you. Michael Hayes, Valletta Native. Valletta Native, I just wanted to say I took your toll and I have a memory of the bridge tolls coming in about out of Vallejo making 40 cents. That was up until 1980s and still 40 cents. Like $7 now and $8 sooner in a couple of years. So when I look at these tolls, it's essentially a tax coming in and out of Vallejo. And to me, it's really a restriction on a free to move financially. Back in the 1970s, 1980s, I'm sure many of these agencies that have represented existed, but they existed in a much smaller form than they are now. And so I have a big problem with bureaucratic teeth. And I'll get organizations like MTC, Caltrans. And they're just administrative black holes. I don't want my toll money going into administrators sitting around in offices. Billion dollar types of high rises.
Next, it was a lot of Hickel. Let's move to those comments from the webinar. Bob Hickel. Next, we will go to the webinar participants for commentary.
Sure. Thank you. Our first comment will be from Cynthia Murray. Give us a moment here. Cynthia?
Cynthia Murray, I am the CEO of North Bay Leadership Council. And we represent the leading employers in Marin, Sonoma, and Napa counties and are very supportive of having Highway 37 become a toll road. We feel that as it becomes a bridge, it should be treated like other bridges. And we really want to make sure that we have a functioning highway before it goes underwater. And these improvements are critical to making sure that the road can be raised and widened to meet the needs of the North Bay. And these are needs of commuters. They are the needs of our public safety people. They're the needs of our goods movement and their need for recreation. And I appreciate that you're trying to build in equity. I think that's a great way to move forward. But it's absolutely essential that we have this and we need to pay for the improvements. And we, as the employers representing over 25,000 employees, really want this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Just one moment, please. Okay, our next comment will be from Paul Thies, Solano Sierra Club.
First, I need to know whether my comments can be heard. The sound quality on this end is very poor. Can they be heard by the group in the room?
Yes, you can be heard. Thank you.
Okay. Then let me begin by pointing out an inconsistency between the word equity and the intention to collect tolls only on the Vallejo side, on the Solano County side. Mrs. Altuawanci said, referred to the project as extending all the way to Highway 101 and it should be considered and told as such. There's also a question in my mind about whether this is going to be a 50% discount for low income or whether this is going to be, as Mr. Fermieri said, consistent with other tolls that are collected across the Bay Area. Are they also going to offer a 50% discount? Lastly, I want to say that dumping more dirt on the highway now is not going to bring us a better result necessarily. We ought to put the money into a raised structure immediately, a causeway all the way across. Thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you very much, Paul. Okay, and our next comment will be from Joshua Lisette.
Go ahead, please. According to Wikipedia, the whole of SR 37 has been proposed to be built to freeway standards since the early 1950s. However, the proposals have been met with many economic and environmental obstacles, making the task all but impossible for much of the route. We've heard a lot of economic obstacles in tonight's feedback. If we continue the same feedback, we'll never see improvements enacted. That being said, I sincerely hope that any tolls enacted take into account the undue tax put on those who travel the road on a regular basis. What I'm most interested in hearing, and I think the people in this meeting would be most interested in hearing at future meetings, are what is this panel doing to apply for some of the $65 billion that were offered for infrastructure with the bipartisan infrastructure deal on a federal basis, on a federal level recently? What are we doing to apply for those funds? And what are the progress toward application for those funds to fund this project?
Thank you very much. Our next comment will be from Roland.
Thank you. I've got a very quick, I have a very quick question to the chair, which is whether any consideration has been given in hearing feedback. I don't know where it's coming from. But any consideration has been given to private financing for this project in return for an operating concession. And the reason I'm asking is because this approach often results in a superior solution delivered faster than lower cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next comment will be from Joe Greenheffer.
Yes, this is Joe Greenheffer. I'm a civil engineer and I commute from Fairfield periodically. I'm supportive of the need for tolls to fund neglected infrastructure over the past few decades to get a sustainable facility. I do think it needs to toll the entire route. And I think the importance in reducing congestion is that getting a mode shift onto HOV, you know, carpools and buses. And so the idea of toll-free for that is good. I would suggest that you report travel times, maybe at the gantry, separately for the single occupancy vehicle lanes and the multi-high occupancy vehicles so that people understand the benefit of carpooling and buses. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next comment is from Stevie.
Hi, my name is Stevie. I am a resident of Vallejo. I understand the importance of building a bridge across the 37. However, I am disappointed to hear that it is going to be told only on the Vallejo side and not at the Marin side. I feel like tolling at the Marin side will capture anyone traveling from Napa, Sonoma, and getting that money from that. I also think that you guys should be working with other agencies to see other modes of public transportation. Is there a way to have the ferry go directly to San Rafael? And that sort of thing, I think, just tolling us is a little ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next comment is from Rachel Clark.
Hi, my name is Rachel Clark. I work with Vintage Southern.
I work with Vintage Sotheby's International Realty and I I sell property in Sonoma, Napa, Marin County, and Solano Counties. I use Highway thirty seven very often and I feel it would be unfair just to charge the Solano County area. I feel that it needs to be equal on both sides in Marin and Solano County. And actually, I think everybody, if we're going to do tolls, I think everybody should be paying their part. And I also am interested in the environmental impact report, if there is one. People there that are speaking in person, if you could turn up the volume, that would be fantastic. Sorry about my picture there with me and my father, but thank you so much for holding this forum and I'd like to be in touch for future forums. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next comment is from Al.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello, so I'd like to thank everyone who showed up today and also putting together this this informational hearing. So why don't we have a, why doesn't, why doesn't the state or Vallejo issue some bonds instead of for investment, instead of having the tolls? Like, I don't understand, like, why does Vallejo, and why is Vallejo the only one that's going to have to pay a toll? Like, that's not really fair to everyone else. If everyone is going to pay across the board, that's more fair. But even then, why couldn't we issue some bonds instead of putting a toll? And how much are these tolls are going to cost, right? Like, everyone's upset about the tolls, but they haven't even told us how much the tolls are going to cost. And then, yeah, and then also, how come we don't have better, like, public transportation? If we had better public transportation in Vallejo and in the surrounding cities? Like, for instance, my mother is disabled, right? So she is unable to get from Vallejo to, what's it called, American Canyon or American Canyon.
Thank you very much, Al, your time is up.
No, but it's the same thing, right? And then you can't go to Vallejo to Fairfield.
We appreciate it, thank you. Okay, our next comment is from John.
Yeah, I'm just curious, what's the toll going to be? What's the toll cost going to be? Hello?
Yes, thank you very much. Is that your comment?
Yeah, what's the, how much the toll going to be? If it could be reasonable, like, right now, because every toll is higher now, so. And that's it, that's the only question I have.
Thank you very much. Okay, that is our final raised hand from the webinar at this time. Actually, sorry, we just, we have one more, if you'd like to take that now. Okay, our next comment will be from Betty Ruth. Betty Ruth, if you'd like to go ahead.
Yes, I'm disabled and I can't get around anywhere in Vallejo with the situation.
Okay.
It's very difficult to move around.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. Yes, it is. Thank you.
So we're going to open up for Commissioner comments now, so we're going to start with Commissioner Russian. First off, Jay Bradshaw, proud to serve on the commission. I'd like to share publicly what my day job is to take the director of the NorCal partners, which has thirty seven thousand working men and women out there in the field. And I want to comment on a couple of things, I know we're going to get a report back, but I have some questions about when the MTC is going to come back up and some of the stuff. But I will say and raise it before, that the only one, the question of the burden on working class folks, I will share with a little personal side. Two thousand eight, two thousand twenty one, my wife and I probably pulled Vallejo home and my wife is still a commuter now from Oakland to Nevada. But the issue, when you look at it, I'm sure anyone here, you look back commute in the morning, it's service folks, it's construction workers. That's, I know you said a high percentage, I'd also like to know where MTC got its data from? How are you getting exactly those numbers on underserved, low income? But when you look at the burden.
And it's up. Yep.
Actually, yeah, I'm trying to respond as a commissioner to whatever today, so hopefully.
I'm just making a point.
I hear your point.
Our words have value too.
I don't disagree, hence I was trying to wrap it with deep notes, no worries. That did set the time limit, I'd like to hear from folks, happy to talk you further about as well. But I'm highly concerned about the burden placed on Solano County, on working class folks in particular, is it going to carry the burden for the infrastructure? Also, some very important questions came up about what is the plan, where it's going to interact with private property and how that works and how budgets are going to work. So they gave a lot of detail on that. Also, another very important question came up to the public tonight is if we look at this interim quote unquote project, is it towards the long term project or will it be like starting all over again? Will it be complimentary to that? And again, I want to strongly share my opinion that the burden cannot be carried by one of the last working class towns in Northern California. I don't believe workers and folks who are struggling, created the housing crisis, which is really driving transportation crisis, which is really making childcare for working people unaffordable. And so when we look at these projects and social impacts, it's broad ranging and these are questions that need to be answered. And I could go on and on, I want to respect the crew here, I may have some more follow up questions to report back. But also, what is the level, like, if I catch it, we're talking about it's going to be comparative to other bridges? I will say my personal opinion on this, you look at gas taxes, they translate into a flat core tax. We look at bridge tolls, also, it usually is not paying any consideration. We definitely have to look at quote low income, what does that mean? We don't want to march rise folks at all. When you talk about uplifted communities, the commuters, because the housing prices, they're starting to tip over from the cost. Everything goes to the cost of housing, childcare, etc. So just want to raise those points and I'll wait for a response on that. Thanks. Thank you for that. Look, we do appreciate all the information that we're getting and certainly feel the burden is. I did want to respond to maybe one or two of the questions. When we say similar to bridge tolls, what we're talking about is the seven or eight dollar toll for the both directions that we have of that, so it's one trip is in that same range. And we do have an equity program that we've stood up on the express rates of eighty or about fifty percent discount for the low income and that's the type appropriately anticipated here.
How about middle class? I mean, that's Rachel low income, but what is low income like? We're typical middle class on loan, like I said, it's costing us four thousand dollars a year in bridge tolls alone. Just to go to work every day. Who qualifies for that? That's another new burden. Where can we find, like, one place to live for lunch there at Rachel's house?
So we're going to wrap up now, we've taken minutes, staff has taken minutes, we're going to address this in our events meeting in May.
This is not a good meeting, why do we have to bring some other meeting, don't you know what we have to say? Why can't you answer our questions?
Is there a shelter down the road? Maybe it's a decision, there's no process.
You guys are very excited, it's already there, so the final presentation on the screen? This is just this lip service of protecting public people. Oh, yeah, the end of everything.
So, incredible, but one of the challenges we have here today for the commission is we do not have a forum to action. We are here to listen, we have heard, I have heard them all. Some of the things we can do, we've heard a lot of things, we've heard from Commissioner Bradshaw, we have additional commissioners online, I know we have commissioners online, have additional information they would like to share about what they've heard, I can share what I've heard. One of the things that happens next in the process is that we take all of this feedback and we don't simply go back to the commission in May and say, well, we heard that the low income, that's great, right? What we do is we go back, we summarize our information, we go back to MTC, we go back to Caltrans, we go back to each of the workshops and we say, here's what we heard and how are you going to respond?
Okay, I have a question, is it correct that's on the site? This has already been approved through the state legislature and it's just waiting for the toll, like, for the governor to sign, is that true? Maybe you speak that.
Yeah, no, that is not true, we have to wait for your authority if we receive this idea. So through the checks, for the clarity question that, because I think it's a tale of two cities in some lights. And then if you're looking at economics and equity, one thing I want to put is MTC. When you look at the level of income overall, I don't want to generalize too much, but on the quote west side as opposed to the east side, how is that being taken into consideration? Again, it's not, I think things get carved up and put in their little boxes sometimes about who's being underserved, what's low income, what's working class, middle class, what do you like? You know, that needs to be taken into consideration and what's the burden of, you know, that's going to fall on folks? Because again, maybe I'm close to it because I lived in Vallejo a long time, but you can see the crushing impact on it. So there should be a project that uplifts and knows, right, who need to pay their fair share. It should be based on what they're carrying already at some level. There has to be some kind of way to, because I don't, I don't understand how the rates are set. Are you talking about the for low income folks on the toll lanes? I don't even know, maybe I should, I apologize, how that is set, right? What is the data we use for that? How is that tracked, you know, that qualifies for that? So these are things that are going to have to be answered for this commissioner to make an informed decision. Question is, there's a, it's a. So it's a long distance from one oh one to Vallejo. And are we going to have some sort of smart metering program? That someone that's going to say to Sears Point or someone that's going to Sonoma from here is not paying a toll commensurate with the person that has to go all the way to San Rafael or vice versa, you know, reverse situation. In other words, it should be told according to how much it uses. I have, if my dad is a hundred and three years old, he's up in Sonoma County and I'm going to visit. I'm going to be going a short distance over Sears Point and then going up into Sonoma. And that that shouldn't be the same toll as someone going all the way from one oh one. And they say that can factor in. And what has been the outreach to regular people? I know that I participated in the Zoom meetings and I voiced our concerns for the people of Vallejo or economic situation. They live here because of that economic situation and they are penalized going almost in the direction of going. That has to be. So any additional comments? If we could do the question cards and do it in a more efficient. Yeah, feel free to rest.
Thank you for that opportunity to respond to some of the questions, Jeanette Weisen with MTC. So I guess I'd like to start off with who, how do you qualify for the low income discount? Would be using the existing standards such as that I A D start program and Clipper Start. So what I mean by that, the current standard is two hundred percent of the poverty level. So for a four person family, that would amount to, I believe, currently sixty thousand. So that's a, you know, frame point. And let's see, what other questions? In terms of reaching out to residents who live on the corridor for discompensation and consideration, giving their access, those details are issues that we need to work out as part of that concept of operations to figure out the implications on people along State Route thirty seven. So that's something that needs to be determined and worked through. In terms of the access along the western portion of the corridor and the full payment of tolling, I'd like to say that the big vision for tolling is to be tolling and collecting tolls from users on both sides. Currently, I just want to clarify, right now, we have this particular project that we can work off of and I can't toll or outside of this project. And I think it is something that we need to continue to work into our program. So that is something we will continue to engage with the public. What is the public opportunities, next steps? We will continue to meet with you and take comment. I know the HCC directly takes comment on this toll facility application, but we also remain available above beyond that as part of our project and program in however ways that we proceed. Trying to think if there's anything else that needed to be answered more immediately. Maybe I'll leave it there and happy to answer questions afterwards.
And if there's any additional comments, if we still have the comment cards for names. And we will hear you, but let's keep it organized. All right, and Carr, you're up first.
And Carr, Dan Vallejo. So like I said at the beginning, one minute is completely inadequate for any kind of meaningful community engagement. And I speak as someone who speaks at city council often within a three minute limit, which is itself compressed. There's some important issues that did not come out in my first comments. First of all, I believe I heard that about half of the improvements that are needed on thirty seven are needed anyway. So if that's the case, why are we looking at tolling? This should have come again underneath the regular maintenance of the of the road. Another thing is, I believe I heard someone say that by twenty fifty, the road would be underwater. So again, we need to be looking at longer term kinds of investments. We don't want to be putting money in now that we then have to pay for it in later. The transportation strategy of having the extra lane devoted to public transportation, HOV and carpooling is completely, I believe, unrealistic. HOV and carpooling, is completely, I believe, unrealistic, given that you've got a source and a beginning and an end zone that are distributed broadly. So you do not have a concentration of targets, so that your first and last miles are convenient and workable. And finally, in looking at the pie chart you have for funding, it looks like you only have maybe 20% of the funding identified, which is inadequate for going forward with the project of this government. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would you like to address the comments, Mr.?
Give it a try. Half of the investments are for things like transit, public access, and improvements like that. There is some of that investment that's associated with just maintaining roadway, but that's coming from state sources. In addition, the improvements that we're making in this particular project at Tollay Creek are designed to buy us quite a bit of time relative to resilience and sea level rise. So the investments are important for the midterm time period. Ultimately, we're gonna be back with much more significant investments that do not have a downstream identified. I've actually addressed long-term sea level rise concerns. Thank you, Andrew. So next up, we have Susan Glazer.
Glover.
Glover, I apologize.
So the comment that I wrote down on the card is what I've been saying all along, and I've raised it at multiple meetings. And that it seems to me that, knowing the way that the road is built and watching all of the ways that they've been trying to continue it, to continue, keep eating that road along, why not just keep it as a frontage road, instead of trying to turn it into a big road? But it will never be a big road if it was built with dirt. You need to be building a causeway further out, a big modern causeway, such as we deserve in the state of California, and leave the old road as a small frontage road for recreational and private land over access. I mean, I just don't see what you guys are trying to do here. It's sinking. My father was a structural engineer, and I just, I'm having, I just, a minute is ridiculous. I need to not have any in touch with someone. I keep trying to talk to you guys.
I apologize for a minute. Thank you, yeah. Savannah Nielsen, next. Savannah Nielsen. And after your, Savannah Nielsen, on my comments.
Hello. In the Texas School Bay area, when you travel around, it's too many tolls, and it's quite expensive. So it's a good idea to have two lanes, one in one direction, to make some extra 37, so it helps with traffic. It does take sometimes like two hours of both the Texas go to Vallejo. And also, it's not nice to have the toll, because sometimes they've got a lot of roads on this 37 side. The East Bay side, or also it's a long road, but on Marin side, in the prairie or the 37, it's not a lot of roads. So people just use it as a common road for a short distance, like to drop something off at school, to go to the grocery stores. And they just use it as a regular road, and it's not sort of a tax that road. So there's no other road you can really go down, but you're just living in a neighborhood, and your neighborhood happens to be between so many Vallejo or areas. Thank you.
Excellent. Now we're gonna go to all my comments.
Okay. Our next comment will be from Al.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to address what I was asking before. I said that, so what are the plans for, like, for people with disabilities, like your paratransit? How can they get from one point to another, especially going to Marin? You have Fairfield paratransit, you have Napa paratransit, and you have Vallejo paratransit. They don't enter, and you even have American Canyon that's run with, by, what's it called, by Napa? None of them talk to each other, so you can't get from one point to another. What kind of things are they gonna do for people that are disabled, that need paratransit? I feel like we just need better public transportation, especially for your disabled patrons. And also, what about a syntax? Has there been any, like, proposal or looked at for bonds? Like issuing a bond to pay for this instead of a toll? Like, that's my time. Thank you, and I appreciate everyone's time there.
Thank you very much, Al. One moment, please. Okay, our next comment would be from Paul Thiestalano Sierra Club.
Dumping more dirt on the existing roadway does not, to raise it a foot or two, does not solve the existing problem of blockage of this vast wetland in, to the north, except at the extreme west and east ends of this project. In another five or 10 years, when sea level raises more, the cheapest thing to do will be simply to dump more dirt. That's why we need to raise the road now, using the best solution available, which is a raised causeway and allowing free passage of water through to the marshlands, which protects against sea level rise itself.
Thank you very much, Paul. Okay, that's our final comment for right now from the webinar.
Thank you so much. We don't have any additional comment cards at the moment. So I think that concludes our evening. Thank you for your input. It's been very good to have it taken. We will incorporate these comments into decisions that are made in the future. And we appreciate the value of time today. Thanks so much.